...meeting of the planning board. First item of business is for the selectmen of the planning board to fill the vacancies that we have on our board. And Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, which is municipal planning and subdivision legislation, Section 81A, says if the members of the planning board are elected, and we are, any unexpired term shall be filled by appointment by the Board of Selectmen and the remainder of the members of the planning board until the next annual election, at which time such office shall be filled by election for the remainder of the unexpired term. So the appointments we make tonight are until the election in May, and then those folks, if they choose to, can run for the remainder of the unexpired terms. And we have, we've received six applications. Dan Edwards, Christopher Smith, Larry Grossman, Mike Cahill, Ron Sassy, and Paul Labby. And I would like to make a motion to nominate Ron Sassy to fill Corey's position. I think Ron is one of the most qualified individuals. He's a registered land surveyor. He's worked with subdivision regulations. He's also a member of the Conservation Commission, as was Corey. And the conservation, Corey being on the conservation kind of meshed in with our work here, with his work here. So I have a motion to nominate Ron Sassy to fill Corey's position.
I'll make a second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those, okay.
I'd like to call our meeting to order on our behalf.
Okay.
And we'll follow what you guys made the motion and seconded. Now it goes into discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the nomination? Okay. Then we'll vote, and then I guess you folks vote, or we vote at the same time. I vote aye in favor of Ron Sassy.
Aye.
Okay. So it's unanimous.
It's a roll call vote.
Oh, okay.
Take a roll call?
Yes, absolutely.
Paul Dostal.
Aye.
Bob.
Wagner.
Bob Wagner.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Bob Wagner.
Aye.
Bob Bartlett, aye.
Brian Moriarty, aye.
Boyle, aye.
Let's go, aye.
Okay. Then it's, I will inform Ron Sassy that he needs to get sworn in, and we'll get him all the bylaws and that sort of thing. To fill Greg Winter's position, I would like to make a motion to nominate Paul Labby. I think Paul Labby is the second most qualified individual because he's been in the real estate business for, according to his application, in town for 40-plus years, not only in town, but in the area. So therefore, he knows land and knows zoning regulations and that sort of thing. So we have a motion. I have a second.
I'll make a motion to nominate Paul Labby for Greg Winter's.
Seconded, then.
All right.
Any further discussion? Okay. Roll call. Paul Dostal.
Aye.
Bob Wagner.
Aye.
Bob Bartlett, aye.
Brian Moriarty, aye.
Boyle, aye.
Let's go, aye.
Then it's unanimous. Paul Labby will fill Greg Winter's position. And again, I will get in touch with Paul and let him know so that he can get sworn in and get the copies of the bylaws and that sort of thing.
Okay. I'll move to adjourn.
One more thing. We still need your, not necessarily tonight, but soon, who you're reporting for the planning board recommend appointment to the CPC.
Okay. We'll have to talk about that.
Planning board's representative to the CPC.
Okay. We'll talk about that, then. Yeah, I guess we're all set.
Can we can move to adjourn?
Seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger Pekarsky.
Yes?
Front and center. What's going on? Why are you here?
Um, we're here to talk to you guys about the...
Why don't you come up here closer so we can hear?
Basically, the zoning and the plumbing. You changed the zoning, like...
No, we didn't change zoning. We ruled that... Let me look at the...
Okay. Well, let me bring to your attention that you ruled whatever you ruled and wrote a letter to the plumber. Now, the plumbing inspector...
No, I didn't write a letter to the plumber. I think we gave it to the zoning enforcement officer.
Well, let me tell you. Between the building inspector and the plumbing inspector, we've got headaches at 62 and a half Elm Street. Not only did you take my permit and told me you're going to take the place down, and then we came to the board, we came to the planning board and tried to justify this.
Yep.
Now you wrote a letter, and where, you sent me a letter, and wherever you sent the other ones, we failed. Like I say, they came and said they wouldn't, they wouldn't inspect the place, and then you took the permit away, so we couldn't do our inspection, our plumbing inspection. So then, after we came in front of you guys and you sent letters out, then we made another appointment with the plumbing inspector, and he says we've got to change all the plumbing.
He said it's now classified as commercial.
So now it's classified as commercial, and we've got to rip it all out. And that's not fair because it's already built. You know what I mean? It's already, it was, the plumbing was already done before we even scheduled an appointment with this guy.
Yeah, and that's...
So it's either got to be grandfathered in, or who's going to pay for the huge mistake?
I don't know. But we did. We informed the building inspector that you're in compliance with the bylaws, that...
Correct.
Under Section 3 Table of Use, commercial storage in sheds, barns, garages, which existed at the time of this original bylaw, and which complies with the current Board of Health Regulations and local fire codes. So you can use the building as a storage building.
That's not, that's not what we're talking about. We're...
I know. I'm just telling you what we did.
Right.
Which has nothing to do with the plumbing.
Right.
It's allowing you to use the building.
Right.
Did you get a copy of this letter dated September 11, 2014?
Yep.
And the other half of it?
I've got all the letters. I don't have them in my possession.
So the planning board found that you could use the property the way you're using it.
Correct. And they gave us, yeah, it does. You don't, you're not, you're not listening to the, you're not basically listening to what I'm trying to explain to you. Listen, we built the, we got a permit for the building.
Yep.
We got a trencher's permit. We got a propane permit.
Yep.
I've got, I got like seven, six permits out, okay? Now, we went ahead and built the building, and I've got siding on it. And then he put in for a plumbing inspection, a rough plumbing inspection. That's it. It's already been, there's steps that you have to do when you build a building, and you've got to go one, two, you know, you've got to do them all in a row.
I know.
Now, we can't, I've already had the electrical done and signed off on, and now the next step is the plumbing inspection. Well, suddenly, 12 hours before the plumbing inspection, the building inspector shows up, takes my permit off the wall, and tells us this place is coming down. And now, you're saying it has nothing to do with the plumbing. Well, of course it did, because he created a huge mess, and he stirred up a pot that he didn't even need to be put on a fire. So...
Well, what does the building inspector say?
What does the plumbing inspector have to do with the zoning?
Nothing.
Why did he question it?
Why?
Not questioning zoning.
He questioned the zoning, and he, this is why I came here three weeks ago or a month ago to correct this.
I have a copy of the plumbing inspectors, the assistant plumbing inspectors, letter dated October 1st, and it says, "The plumbing system presented for a rough inspection, 9/29/14 failed inspection pursuant to 248 CMR 10.06, .2, .3, .3."
Why did it fail?
Limited use of ABS, which is a type of plastic pipe, for commercial buildings.
It wasn't considered a commercial building until October, when you started calling it that.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said because I was talking at the same time. But it seems to me that this letter says that it failed because it's piped like a residential, that you can't use that kind of pipe in a resident, you can use this kind of pipe. The way it's piped is for residential use.
It was...
But for commercial use...
It was residential until October 1st, till we came to the planning board, is what I'm trying to tell you.
We can't, well...
None of this, none of this started until we came to this meeting, and you guys said, "Okay, this is what you're using it for, that's what you're going to zone it as."
No, we're not zoning anything.
Change it to zoning.
We didn't change the zoning.
This used...
Don't say that. We didn't change the zoning. The zoning remains.
Okay. Then let me ask you. Why does it say rural residential on the permit?
It says residential on the permit.
Because that's the zone.
It says residential on the permit.
Okay. So why would, if you hired an electrician, nor a plumber, nor an idiot, okay? When they come to the facility, they read the permit, and that's what they're going to put the wires in.
No, no, no.
They're not going to put commercial plumbing in a building.
Plummet or they wire it according to the use, not what the ground is owned.
Okay. Then why do you need commercial plumbing in a barn that has...
It's not a residential use.
Three people taking a leak in it and washing their hands.
It's not a residential use.
Why would you need commercial plumbing in it?
Because it's not a residential use. It's not a house. People aren't living there, are they?
Okay. Okay. You got me there. Then why does it say single-family dwelling on the permit?
I don't know. I don't know.
See? This is all, this is all...
Regardless, if I see, if I see a permit that says single-family dwelling, and it's from the town, it's everything, we paid, we did everything, I'm not going to come to Town Hall and say, "Are you sure? Is this how I should pipe it? Is this how I should..."
Well, that's, again, I don't know. How, how do you expect us to correct it?
We just need a grandfathered. I mean, this is a terrible scenario. We spent thousands.
I can't, the planning board can't tell the plumbing inspector how to do his job.
I talked to Mark, we talked to Wondolowski. No. Mark Wondolowski said if you get some type of letter from the town stating that, you know, they'll grandfather it in because this was decided on October, whatever, and he presents that to me, I can do it. But if not, then you've got to start all over.
Well, we gave you a letter.
No, no. You gave him a letter that the permit was coming back. That's all you gave him. You know what I mean?
No, I didn't. No, I said the use is allowed.
Oh, yeah.
We said the use is allowed.
He's fine with the use. He's fine with the use, but now he's got in stipulation that the building's commercial, and you've got to plummet as commercial, which the plumbing was all done, completed. We're asking for an inspection. You know, that was a long time ago.
Yep.
So now, now that you, like, I'm not going to say you zoned it, but you wrote him a letter that it's commercial use, and now they want us to cut all the plumbing out and start over, so who's going to pay that? Who's going to pay for that?
I don't know.
The buster signed off on the electrical, and that's all residential.
I, maybe the other two fellows here understand what we've got to do, but I don't understand.
Yeah. It seems to me that the building department made a mistake. They're the ones that you corrected.
That's right. We, we don't have any jurisdiction over anybody but ourselves.
The building inspector's department.
He told, he told us we need to see you, and so did Mark Wondolowski.
Well...
Well, and you did back in September. We did.
And we came here in November, and I believe you guys didn't meet.
And on September 29, September 11th, our letter back to him was saying that it's commercial storage is allowed in a rural residential area.
Right.
So in terms of...
But that doesn't necessarily mean that...
That doesn't change the permit. You know what I mean? I was issued a permit for rural residential.
Well, I think the...
Okay? Single-family dwelling, which sounds like an apartment.
Yeah.
And that's when the town and Mark Wondolowski made a phone call, because he told me he did, because I asked him. And he's like, "I'm the one that tri-" I go, "How did this all trigger, like, 12 hours before your inspection at 7:00 a.m. in the morning?" I'm like, "How did all of a sudden, like, I've had no problem for a year, and this, all this triggered?" And he goes, "Yeah, I made a phone call to the building inspector, Scott, and, and he came down, and they ripped the permit off the wall." So it's all to do with the single-family dwelling. Maybe you think I'm...
That was issued in error.
Building apartments down there?
But it's not our error.
You know what I mean?
I know it. It's the building inspector's error.
It's the town of Hatfield's error.
Just so happens he's retired, but...
And I don't have no paperwork on me, because I can't tell you the date. You've got more paperwork than I got. All my stuff is already in a lawyer's office in Northampton. So I'm coming to you to ask you for help. Now, if you, I don't know how, I'm not, I don't build houses. I don't know the proper steps. By talking to Mark and Scott, they, that's what, I'm telling you what they told me. That's what they told me. They said, "You come to the planning board meeting, you get them to write me a letter, you can go forward. If not, cut it all out and start over." I'm like, "Well, who's going to pay for it?"
What's the letter supposed to say? That the plumbing should be approved?
That the first initial building permit is how things should be.
We can't say that either, because we didn't issue the permit.
We didn't issue the permit. We can't tell the, another...
So what do we do? Go get a retired guy to sign off on it?
I don't know. I guess. Maybe your attorney has an answer, but, I mean, we, we...
We don't even have the plumbing inspector from Hatfield. Why is, why do I have a plumbing inspector from...
He lives in Hatfield.
Northampton.
He lives in Hatfield.
Yeah, but he's not the plumbing inspector for Hatfield.
He's the assistant. He's the assistant.
Yeah. Why can't I get the correct one that's supposed to be for this town? I guess he's out fishing.
That's a whole other issue, and I'm not going to...
He's out fishing or something all the time. He ain't never around.
Well, I can't, we don't have any control over that either.
We got stuck with this guy.
If I had a magic wand, I'd solve everybody's problems with it.
And now I can't.
But I don't have one. I, again, I don't know what we're supposed to do. I thought we...
I think the...
But we don't either, and I've got a lot of money tied up in the building.
Turned away when we said the use is allowed. Who did the plumbing?
Me.
Why did you plummet residential? I'm asking questions I shouldn't be.
Because it says residential on the permit.
That's got, it's the use.
For me and my father.
If somebody did a typo and said, "If I was building a house and the building inspector made a mistake and put industrial permit," would you pipe my bathrooms in my house, my master bathroom off of my bedroom? Would you pipe it like an industrial system?
No.
No. Why not?
It says single-family dwelling.
No. Wait a minute. Why wouldn't you pipe my plumbing that way? This is a theoretical thing. Why wouldn't you pipe my...
I'm not talking theoretically. I'm talking about what happened.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to prove a point.
I'm talking about what happened. You don't go to the town and say, "Are you sure about this on the permit? Like, are you sure you want me to do it this way?"
But you know it wasn't a single-family dwelling. You know that.
It's for me and my dad to hang out there.
I know it.
Why does it need to be piped like a Walmart?
Because it's more commercial use than residential.
No, it's not.
And how did we know that?
It's not a residential use.
You classified it as that in October.
Well, again, I'm just trying to draw out here, but we have no jurisdiction over the plumbing inspector or the building inspector. We have no jurisdiction. Maybe your attorney needs to write a letter to them and explain it to them, and maybe they'll correct it internally. But we can't tell them what to do. We don't have the authority.
Well, that's what they came right on to us to call.
Maybe you need to appeal it, appeal it to the, there's a, like, a building permit is appealed to the Bureau of Building Regulations and Standards. There must be some plumbing regulation board that you can...
I do want to get the building. It's already been two years. I do want to get it completed sometime before I pass away.
Sometimes that's what it takes. You have to appeal it to a higher authority, and we're not the higher authority.
Well, they tell us we come to see you, they, you tell us we need to go see them, and it's just a vicious cycle. You guys didn't meet in November.
Again, if I could help you, I would, but I cannot tell the building inspector or the plumbing inspector what to do. We, when I say aye, I mean the planning board, we don't have jurisdiction over it.
They sent us here. I wouldn't even be here today. They sent us here.
I guess he should have sent you with a letter to tell us what we need to do.
What are we supposed to do? I guess. That's my question.
I just told you.
I think, I think the...
Mark was at our building when we met with him, and he just gave us a song and dance. He came, he came out of his truck, and he walked around for 15 minutes and make him believe he's everybody's friend, and then after that, he tells him, "You know better. I taught you better than that." You know? You know how to build, you can't put, you need to pipe this all with copper and cast. "Yeah," he says, and when he just, when, according to this letter that we just got a week ago, it was a single-family dwelling a year ago when we got the permit. And then the town shut, stopped us. I mean, new building inspector, Scott, he came and ripped the permit off the wall.
New plumbing inspector.
New plumbing inspector, same thing. None of this, we, we haven't had a bit of, like, distress until all of this, until that plumbing inspector came around, whatever the date was. Every, I mean, we paid for the electrical permit, we paid for plumbing permits, we paid for digging to the street, we hired a cop to stand there. It's not a secret that we were building this building back there. We went through all the steps that we were supposed to go through.
Well, again, I think the, and I think the rest of the folks will concur, that the building permit must have been issued in error when it said residential renovation.
Okay. It's not our fault.
Yeah, but...
But it's not our, we can't correct that.
I don't, we can't correct it either.
Downstairs.
Do I just go down and make my own permit?
The building inspector is the only person that can correct.
You think I went to school for that?
The building is...
I went to school for different things.
The building inspector is the only person that can correct the permit. We can't correct it.
Building inspector's no longer.
No, but there's a new building inspector.
Retired.
There's a new guy there. Maybe that's what he wants you to do. I don't know what he wants you to do. He should have given us a letter saying what we're supposed to do. I thought we covered it when we sent him a letter saying the use is allowed.
He gave us a permit back, but he never...
So he gave you the building permit back.
And then we scheduled another...
The same one.
Yes, the same correct one.
That's his residential or dwelling.
But he wants us to come back and get a new one, and then, in the meantime, he scheduled a second plumbing permit once we got the permit back, and it's just, it's a joke. So he comes back and basically acts like everything's okay. He's like, "Oh, everything looks great in here," for like 25 minutes or 15 minutes, and then he finally like, "Well, except that you just got to cut it all out and start over." Like a joke, like it's some type of joke.
Well, I don't know.
It's like, it's not a joke.
What's the new permit say?
We didn't get it.
We have the old permit.
You have the original permit.
They gave us the original permit.
As a renovating, single-family dwelling, then it's...
They mailed us back the original permit.
Somebody needs to do something for us, is all we're trying to say.
So the beef is with the building department. That's where the beef is.
Yeah. And why did, if he thought the permit was issued in error, why did he reissue it?
I'm going to call Wilma Davis tomorrow and have her schedule me one for the, for next month.
I think he's got, he's downstairs.
And I'll go downstairs tomorrow and talk to him.
He's right here now. He's down here now.
I'll go talk to him.
He's there now.
I'll talk to him now, then.
The building inspector.
But what I'm telling you is, and then I'll be back next month.
Okay.
To the vicious circle that you guys will send me in. I don't, I'm trying to ask for help. You're going to give me the answer, and then you're always going to go home, and then I'm going to go talk to this building inspector.
I would help you. I thought I helped you when I, we helped you when we gave you this letter.
You did.
What I'm saying is the building inspector, I think he's there on Wednesday evenings. If you go down and see him now, maybe he'll come up here and tell us what he needs from us, and then we can help you.
We're willing to try anything.
Go before he, I think, when is he there? Till 8 o'clock? He's only there till 8 o'clock.
We're willing to try anything, but I'm just telling you, this is what happened.
Okay. Hustle on down, and then come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've got a couple of minutes. I sent a letter to, an email to Chris Curtis at PVPC.
Yep.
My carbon, did I, did you get one, Bob?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I had two email addresses for you.
Yeah. No, they, I got it.
Okay. And while I was typing it, I was thinking about, so I did my own definition, and, but I have not heard back from Chris Curtis. I looked everywhere for the definition of a commercial parking lot, and I couldn't find anything online, so I kind of made up my own, you know, what do we want to cover and all that sort of thing. So let's see what he has to say about it.
Yep.
And, you know, if, if we determine that this is a good definition, then we'll propose it for annual town meeting to amend the zoning bylaws to include that definition of a commercial parking lot, because the, as I said in the letter to him, that it's not allowed in any zone, but yet it's not defined, so we don't know what to not allow.
When was, is that put in when they did the master plan update about commercial parking?
Yes. Yes. The only, we can't stop what's going on there because it's pre-existing, non-conforming, but it would, it would, if, when this gets into our zoning bylaws, then future, it won't happen in the future, you know? And again, I tried to cover everything of folks paying to park, and then the commuter parking lot, and the automobile dealer parking cars as well, because that's happened, I guess, in Northampton, so...
So is, I'm just kind of thinking out loud after I read this again. Automobiles, is that, that includes any type of motor vehicle, like, that includes tractor-trailer trucks?
Well, there you go. Yeah. See, maybe we should include, maybe we need to include trucks in there, because automobile is...
Considered like a...
Considered to be, yeah, like a car or, a car or, or a pickup truck or something like that, but maybe we need to include, maybe...
Semi-tractors.
Yeah. Commercial, I guess if we said commercial vehicles, then that would cover...
Buses.
Any sort of a truck or a bus or something along that line. So that's, good thoughts. That's...
Yeah. I think, I would agree with Paul that we should make sure that this covers all vehicles.
Expand that to, like, commercial vehicles, vans, semi-tractor trailer trucks. What else? Just...
So we'll work on this, and hopefully we'll hear back from him. But again, it's good to get that input, because sometimes, you know, one person can, you're focused on one thing and you don't see the whole...
So you see the last sentence covering the situation that we have out on 5 and 10, because in that case, they're not charging, right?
Yes.
Yeah. She's just allowing them to use it out of the kindness of her heart, so that would not be covered by the first one, but it would be covered by this last sentence.
Right. And that's why I put whether the owner is private, municipal, or state government, because it could, I mean, we don't want any, maybe we don't want any commercial, I mean, commuter parking lots like you see along the interstate.
I think they have one in Northampton there on Bridge, Bridge Street, like, down by the fairgrounds. Isn't that a commuter, by that playground?
I think so. I think it probably is, yeah. Probably to take care of the Route 9 traffic.
That is, that is a...
And there's one up by, by Route 9, up by...
Deerfield, up by the, the, gas station there, yeah. There's another one somewhere close by as well.
Yeah. I think, given the amount of truck traffic that we do have in town, we should probably expand this to include all vehicles.
Yeah. Okay. Good, good thought. Thank you. We've got two more minutes here. We received a plan from Hatfield Village showing the crosswalk in their, on their amended site plan. It took them a while to get it to us, and I, today I brought a copy of it to Phil, DPW Director, to be sure that it was compliant with Mass DOT regs, and he sent us back a note today that, "I've reviewed the plan presented by the Berkshire Design Group on behalf of Hatfield Village on the proposed crosswalk on Elm Street. The design is in compliance with Mass DOT standards and have no concerns as presented. I recommend this project move forward for safety purposes for the residents of Hatfield." So we'll have to stamp this plan and sign it as an amended site plan for the village, which, again, eliminates the internal sidewalk, but creates a crosswalk at Elm Street with the handicap ramps and a short length of sidewalk on their property to facilitate the residents to cross Elm Street to use the Elm Street sidewalk.
Does this plan, though, also include the requirement of the additional landscaping around the eastern property line? Because that was the other thing we approved.
I didn't see that on the map.
I think we were supposed to put some on the side.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Actually, in the, in the decision on site plan that Wilma provided us, we voted to approve the, them to eliminate the sidewalk on the inner circle and tie the village in with the sidewalk on Elm Street, and that the LLC install additional landscaping around the eastern property line where the property abuts the cornfield and, and in the inner circle behind the row of houses.
Okay. I'm trying to read it upside down. I don't think it shows that. I'm trying to read it upside down. I don't think it shows that. It's not called out on here. This would be that.
That'd be along there, and then, and then in the interior.
Nope, doesn't show anything.
Stuff here, right, was gonna be on this side. That side, 'cause here's the cornfield.
The cornfield is here.
Helena's property, or, right, and then, and then in here. And in the inner circle behind the row of houses.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to get in touch with Steve Lozzi again and ask for that plan, so we'll, we'll hold off on this then. Okay, eight o'clock. Next thing on the agenda is Ron Pash with a preliminary plan for subdivision.
Again, as a question, I had the idea drawn and stamped to see if it would meet with your satisfaction.
Why is he calling it a private way?
It has to be a private way because the zone, if you make it a public road, it won't meet zoning regs. And then he said, there's nothing you can do if it doesn't meet zoning regs, but because a private road meets all the zoning requirements, you guys have the power to say that that's okay, and you can't get into any trouble.
I don't understand why it wouldn't, why would a.
Because the, the definition of a private road, you don't have to take the fifty feet that is required for a public road, and if you take the fifty feet that the public road's required, you don't get that, that mandatory distance that you need from the front of the house to the road. So that, that, that's an exception that he said that would violate zoning laws, and he said the planning board, there's nothing they can do, no matter what, what they want to do, but when you make it a private road, it's only a thirty-five foot mandatory requirement, which then allows him to get that mandatory zoning reg that you have to, that you have to.
Where'd he found that? He, he, he'd have to give me the chapter and verse on that.
Well, I, I mean, absolutely. I mean, Randy, you know, you know Randy. Randy obviously knows his stuff. He wouldn't have, he wouldn't have wasted your time or his time to come up with something that didn't work. And that, that legally makes it clean, and then my responsibility, obviously, to take care of it. And then the town doesn't have to take care of it. And then it doesn't require a whole town meeting and everything else to approve another road that they have to be responsible for. And then he made this, this all wider, as you said, in case somebody wants to log this and, and come through, then it would, it would allow them to, to do that. It's not just a little five-foot skinny strip that, that you hated over here.
And that's so the, the back land becomes part of the front, the, the parata house in Byron.
Yep. This, the strip, and then half of.
Half of the back.
Half of the woods. So it's like ninety, it's over a hundred thousand square feet instead of the, you know, the way they did the forty-fives over here, which you were opposed to, that this is a hundred thousand square feet. So we're not trying to do a bare minimum thing or anything. It's actually functional.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm not convinced about the proposed private way. You know, we don't have private ways in town.
Actually, Mike Mendick said you have about three that he knows of.
Well, I think there's one, there's one where Helena Chemical is. That's a private way because it existed prior to zoning, all that stuff. So, uh, we consider it a private way because there was no other way to handle it, but, uh, I mean, the, the whole purpose of the subdivision bylaw is to create lots with road frontage.
Well, it's a private road. It, it has to meet all the requirements for the private road, so it's not like it doesn't have road frontage. It's just not, it's not a driveway.
I know, but we don't, we don't have any requirements for private roads. We don't have that.
I, I, and you may be right. He, he, I think what Randy said is a private road is in the power of the planning board to okay if they wish. There's no regs that say you can't do this. If I understood everything that he said. He said, he said, this is the only thing you have the power to say okay to. If he puts in a public road, it won't meet zoning, and even if you say, oh, we love it, he said, it, it won't get past the state.
Why? Because it would create less than thirty-five feet of, of setback?
Correct. Yeah, it gets at about the twenty-eight feet, and you have to count this, you know, even if you knocked off the front porch, you, you, you probably can get it to thirty-two, but I don't think that law is gray. I think it's pretty black and white that it's thirty-five feet or forget it.
No, I think we can waive that. We can waive that.
He, he claimed that's a zoning law, and the planning board can't overwrite a zoning law. Again, I'm, this is all over my head. I'm just, you know, I, you know, when I ask Randy, and Randy goes, you know, he goes, this is what's, I'm, I'm talking.
You know, it's, it's like the other folks before us, that were here before you. If somebody had put something in writing, we'd know what, you know, because otherwise it's just hearsay, and I don't understand.
Oh, no, sure. No, I mean, I mean, I can, I can have Randy, you know, it, it's, it's the concept that, you know, we're, we're just, I'm trying to see if you're happy with, and obviously, if you're not even happy with the concept, then there's no reason, I don't want to waste Randy's time or your time for anything.
I mean, there may be another way of doing it, you know, I'm.
Yeah, the concern I would have with this only is that th, this potentially sets up the opportunity for flag lots all over town. If you just do something like this and then just get two hundred feet off of it. I mean, you could punch one of these into any number of lots all over town. In fact, the gentleman that was here off of, uh, Old Stage Road is essentially what he's talking about wanting to do.
That's right.
But you can't, I mean, I can't get a flag, I mean, if you have to have two hundred feet of frontage, I can't get, can't, you can't, flag lots can't exist.
Well, that's what you're doing. I mean, basically, you're creating a flag lot out of this second lot by bringing in a private way and then getting two hundred feet of frontage off of that private way as opposed to two hundred feet off of the, the main road.
Or building a new road in and creating two hundred feet of frontage.
But I also get two hundred feet over here.
Right, but it's all off of a private way as opposed to off of the main, uh.
Off of a town road.
Off of a town road. I mean, that's the whole idea behind road frontage, is that it's off of the, the traveled way. And I, I'm just speaking out loud, not necessarily specifically to this project, but just generally, you could see this happening all over town, that someone puts a private way in, 'cause we have lots of flag lots all over the community where you, where it's not even this, it's just this. You don't even have that dwelling. You just have like a, an old bowling alley lot, and then it opens up in the back. And you could do that and put two hundred feet on it and say it's, you've got your two hundred feet of frontage.
Is that a property line, or would that become a property line?
That is the property line, yes. So it has.
For this private way, so if you.
No, no, no. This, the two hundred feet is for that lot. This has, which, I mean, obviously, this is not, this is pre-existing, non-conforming here, but it also, the property line is here, so it has, this is two hundred, this is two hundred feet just by itself.
That's what I'm saying, you're creating this property line, though.
Yes, this is, this is, this is part of this property.
This only exists if this gets constructed. So you're creating a flag lot.
Well, I have to, I mean, I have to, I have to create a property line for this if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna put a house.
Right.
I mean, because the purpose was to try to not destroy this house, but, you know, keep it.
Would use the back end. But this is creating a flag lot, in my opinion. I think, I think we, I have to, we have to look through the subdivision regulations, because, you know, I mean, we don't use them a lot, so that they're, they're, we have to read them, but.
Yeah, no.
I, I've not seen, I, I looked through it today, and I didn't see anything in there about private ways. It, it talks about creating a town road and building the road to specifications. This may be allowed in, in another town that Randy works in or does surveying in, but it's not allowed in Hatfield.
No, he, he, he said it's the thing that you guys are allowed to happen. It's not a state reg. It's, it's, it's the, it's the one thing.
Who allows this?
The planning board. He said the planning board.
But, you see, we're allowed to do things, we're allowed to do things according to the zoning regulations, Chapter forty-eight, which is a state law, the zoning act.
Yeah.
And then there's, uh, Chapter forty-one. That's, this was, is what allows us to do things.
Yeah.
We just can't make up rules. That's why I said, I need, I need to know where that.
Where he found that.
Where that came from.
Okay. Well, no, that's fair.
That's why if people put things in writing.
Sure.
You know, this is allowed according to this chapter and verse, then we can look and make that determination. Yeah, it's in compliance, or no, it's not in compliance.
Okay.
Uh, but just to say we can do it.
No, I mean, I'm sure.
Doesn't tell me anything.
No, that makes, that makes sense, so I, I mean, I can certainly call him tomorrow and ask him where he found that and where that, where it states that you're allowed to let that happen.
Yeah. And yes, there are private ways in town, but they were created before we had zoning. There were, there was buildings built behind buildings behind buildings with a long driveway, and the building exists. You can't make the people take their building down.
Of course.
Undo what was done in compliance with all the regulations at the time.
Yeah.
So therefore, we consider that driveway a private way because there are individual owners, so that the person that owns the second building back and the third building back can get to his building to use it, because we can't, we can't tell him, we can't use it, 'cause he built it according to.
Sure.
The regulations at the time.
No.
Uh, I, the only one I know of is where Helena Chemical is. I don't know of any other private ways.
Yeah, Mike told me a couple, and I forgot the names, 'cause I.
That's the only one I know of, because we had to, uh, deal with that one.
Sure.
Helena Chemical was, or when the property was sold off to somebody else. So, I guess we need more information, and, uh, I, I think for the record, we can, we should consider this a sketch and not a preliminary plan, because a preliminary plan starts a clock ticking, and a sketch is really just a piece of paper for discussion. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah, get Randy to.
Find out where that, that is allowed.
Tell us where it is, and then.
Okay.
We'll make that determination whether or not it's in compliance with our subdivision regulations.
Okay. Is that something that should just be a phone call where I, I have, I get it from Randy and I call you guys? Or do we set up, do we have to set up another meeting a month from now to tell you that, or how does that, how does one handle that?
It, it would be nice if you could get us, get it to us sooner than a month from now, you know, get it to us.
Well, I'll get it tomorrow.
In the next week or whatever, so that we can, so that we can research it.
Sure.
And, uh.
It'd probably be best too for you if you got it in writing from him, or at least so that there's, or in an email or something, so there's absolutely no confusion.
Yeah, I'll have him email it to me, and I can forward it, I can email it to you, or I can print it and fax it, or I can.
Okay.
I can call somebody and say, this is the, the page it's on, or whatever.
Can we, can we go through your email, and then, and then you can, um. Yeah, if you could have Randy email it to Wilma, and she'll jot down her email address.
And I'll just give that, yeah.
And, and then, uh, Wilma will get it to us, and then we'll, uh, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
So again, I'm, I'm considering this a sketch, because according to the regulations, if it's a sketch, it's just a piece of paper to talk about. If it's a preliminary plan, then it's a, uh, time clock starts ticking.
Certainly a sketch.
So you're in agreement with that? It's a sketch?
I'd call it a sketch.
Okay.
Do I leave that with you to mull over, or do I take it away so we don't have to think about it?
Well, why don't you leave it with us, so that when we get the, the Randy's explanation for it, we can have that.
Sure.
Graphic in front of us.
All right.
To look at that.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
Do you have something, Mitch?
No, I'm curious about this.
Just, oh, okay.
And the one before.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, it's good to see some faces here that don't have an X to kind of what.
It's the whole thing, will they have a secretary?
We're gonna contact the Butters?
Secretary two at town at hill.org.
No, we don't have to notify a Butters. It, but it's posted, you know, our agenda is posted. I mean, he was on the agenda.
I understand, but you're talking about putting in a road in such, I would think you're supposed to contact the Butters.
No, we don't have to, not according to the law. We only do what the law says. That's all we can do. Well, the next step is a preliminary plan. If we approve the preliminary plan, then it's a definitive plan. That's the, that's the approval. The approval of the preliminary plan says, yeah, okay, that's gonna work. Now give us the construction details of the road and, and, you know, all the lot lines meets and bounds, and, you know, if you've got to do perk tests, do your perk tests and all that. They don't have to here, 'cause they're sewer. Do your perk tests and all that sort of thing, and then the, uh, that's put on what's called a definitive plan, and that's the plan that we approve. So that's, the subdivision can be constructed, but you'll know about it, 'cause everybody knows what's going on. Well, I mean, and, and all we're required to do is to post. Uh, we don't have the budget to notify everybody all the time about everything.
No, I'm just asking.
We have budget or the, or the expertise to do that.
And the, the second option, or the, the unpreferred option of tearing the house down and putting the house in the back, that doesn't require permission, correct?
Building permit.
No.
Demolition permit.
Demolition permit, building permit.
That would only have, so that would just be the building inspector.
Yep.
So if he says that's okay, then we don't need to talk about anything. Okay, he's ready.
No, other than.
He's ready to prove that.
We may, we may need to have a finding saying that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
Right.
Because it doesn't have two hundred feet of frontage. We may need, you may need to come in and see us that, um, that it's, again, a pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
Okay.
Which, again, can be used.
Correct. And, and if it's a pre, and, 'cause we, we, I mean, Randy has already told me that it is that, but that just means that it, you can only put one, one house on it.
One house, one house.
And that, that doesn't include the barn, 'cause that's not.
That's not residential. No, the barn can stay, because that's a, that's an outbuilding or storage building. There can only be one residence, and that's what this says. Only one residence per lot.
So then that option is always available, and then I, I would only have to just extend this driveway.
It's a driveway then, yeah.
Then I just.
Yeah, you could build your house way back there.
Well, we don't want to be there. That's really bad back there.
Have a driveway, yeah, I'm just.
Well, by, by the time I got close, then Conservation's gonna tell me you can't put it there.
I'm being a little facetious.
No, I know, I'm just kidding. No, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna go, if it goes, it's gonna go right here.
Okay.
That's the, that's the.
Okay.
The thought process. Okay, I will do, I will.
Get us that information.
Tomorrow and try to get that information to you by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
Steve Brusko is next on the agenda. If you don't have anything, Mitch, Steve is. Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, this, this is also prepared by Randy. Okay, uh, this, this piece of land is at the corner of Straits and Depot Road up in North Hatfield, although there is a house right here. I've got, there's six townhouses sitting right here on this lot. And what I'm, what, what we're trying to do here. And what I'm, what, what we're trying to do here is utilize the frontage on Depot Road. There's about five hundred and fifty feet of frontage, uh, that, that equates to two building lots. However, there is a wetland right next, uh, right next to the, to, to Depot Road. I would prefer not to have to deal with it, with the wetlands for a number of different reasons. And my question tonight, tonight to the board is, would you allow me to put a common drive? Utilizing, uh, the right of way off of, off of Straits Road to access these two lots.
And what are those, single-family dwellings?
Yes.
And get your, um, your frontage off of Depot Road?
Yes, correct.
And this would, and this would indeed be a common private driveway?
That's correct. It would be a common private driveway.
Like, uh, Poshex on Lindsay Road?
Yeah, yeah. The bylaws don't address common driveways.
I know.
I talked to Stanley Sadowski and he, he allowed those up on the mountain where there was, uh, I guess because of the terrain or, or whatever, they couldn't put a driveway. But his policy was always the common driveway had to be, had to exit onto the road that had the frontage.
His, his policy?
Yeah, that was, he allowed those on the mountain. There was three, I think he had three lots in a, with a common driveway, but they had to come out on the road where the frontage was.
Well, maybe there was no option to go off of another road.
Oh, probably not, probably not. I think, uh, that, that kind of, when you think about emergency vehicles coming there. If they have a Depot Road address, how is the emergency vehicle gonna know that they have to go down Straits Road to get there? Whether it's fire, police or ambulance. I think that was his reasoning for doing it, that if it was, if it was on, if the driveway, the common driveway.
Was on Depot?
Exited the Depot Road and they received a call for one of the houses on Depot Road, they at least would be on the right road and the driveway would have the both numbers on it or three numbers or however many numbers there were.
Okay, Sadowski's retired.
Yeah.
And, um, he's not gonna render an opinion on this particular situation.
I called him today because I couldn't find anything in here. We don't, we don't have anything on common driveways. That may be another thing we have to work on.
So do you have the power as the board to, to make a determination on this?
I don't know. Or it never came before us before.
The guy before me said, Randy told me you did. I don't know. Also, I know, I would rather not be messing around in wetlands.
Yeah, I know.
To, to utilize, to be able to utilize these two building lots.
And you have enough outside of the wetland area to get these two, uh, this is probably onsite septic here or would it go?
Onsite septic.
Yeah.
There's no sewer up there.
Yeah.
There's no, is, is there sewer on Depot Road?
No.
No. I didn't think so.
There's water, but no sewer. But yeah, these, these proposed locations for these two single-family houses are out of the one hundred foot, um.
Oh, he had one hundred feet wetland buffer line, yep.
And he, the reason he asked me to, you know, come in front of the board is to, before we go any further.
Right.
Um, you know, we're either gonna go this way, we're gonna deal with the wetlands, which I really don't wanna do, or we're gonna get approval from you for the common drive. And go that way.
Aside from not wanting to, uh, just perhaps deal with the administrative work and paperwork of the wetlands and the Conservation Commission, is, do you feel like there's, that there would be significant, um, additional environmental problems with coming through here?
I really don't, but I was on the Conservation Committee in town here for three terms. And personally, if, uh, if there's any way to not have to, you know, deal with the wetlands or interrupt the existing wetlands, I prefer not to do it.
Can you orient me a little bit, where are we before the drop-off on Depot Road? You know, with a, with a.
Okay, here's.
Oh, Straits Road, okay, yeah, right.
Straits Road is right here and Depot Road.
Yeah, it starts to drop off. Well, here's the, yeah, look at the contours.
Yeah, right, right.
Starts to drop right here.
Okay.
It's, it's still dropping right through here and it starts to flatten out over here.
Okay, so, uh, uh, okay, I know where you're talking about now.
Motika's house.
Yeah, that's what I said, Motika's is right here and then Tulum's is next and, uh, Christmas Tree Farm is right there.
Christmas Tree Farm.
Yeah, a little further down, yeah, okay. Not, I'm just, uh, asking if, if, if there were approval for this, would you have any problem with there being additional restriction, that there be no additional house lots coming off? In other, in other words, that it'd be limited to just the two?
They, they, I don't believe there ever could be because that would never become a town road. Number one, it's only gonna be, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty feet wide and the town could never accept that. It's strictly a residential driveway. So no, there, there would never be, there would never be lots other than one, one, one residential dwelling here, one here and eventually one on, on this lot which is not involved in this right here.
And it has its frontage off of Straits.
Frontage right on Straits Road.
So this whole, is this considered lot?
If lot two is here.
This is the lot that you gave me approval to in nine, in two thousand and eight to construct six more townhouses.
Yep, yep.
And since, since two thousand and eight, for a number of different reasons, I, I've decided not to go forward with that project.
But the road would've been off here, right?
Yeah, uh, yes.
I mean, yeah.
The driveway, the driveway would've come in, what, would've come in and then turned.
Yep.
So we were, at one time, we're allowing, um, uh, townhouses off of Straits Road from that?
And this was gonna be called two hundred and four Straits Road.
I think it was gonna, it was gonna be one big lot though, I believe.
Uh, no, it, it, Bob, the stent, it was, it was, uh, it had a little bit more frontage than this is showing.
Yep.
But there was enough frontage for another lot right here that we didn't even try to deal with back in two thousand and eight. We were just trying to take one lot at a time back then.
So did you ever file the plans for that and get approval for that or was it just a conversation that you had?
We, we got all the approvals, but I just decided not to.
It was approved with this one though, with this townhouse.
Well, that, that was all approved and that got constructed.
Yeah, I know, but it was approved when we approved this one.
No, this was two thousand and six and then I came back in two thousand and eight and got approval for that one.
So are you actually looking to just, could it be that you're just amending that original, that two thousand and eight approval to drop it from six townhouses to two six?
Configuration of the lots are different.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and the, the townhouse required a special permit, right? And if you don't start construction or if you don't. Exercise a special permit in two years.
Obama extended that, I think, by two years, but I still, I, I chose not to exercise my right to, to construct that.
But the same theory was in play, that you would be getting your road frontage off of Depot Road but having your access off of Straits Road. And at that time, then, these would be considered for emergency and mail purposes, uh, a beat on Straits Road.
To the point where there was gonna be a hydrant, Bob.
Yep.
Bob insisted on a certain, certain size, uh, water line to, to support a hydrant for those, for those six townhouses.
But those townhouses, for all intents and purposes, when someone says, come over to my kid's birthday party, they'd be going to two oh four Straits Road.
That's correct, that's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And for all I know, why couldn't this be two oh four A, two oh four B? I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know the ramifications on that. I know it took the town six months to come up with a street number. They couldn't, they couldn't get it together on whether it should be, uh, Depot Road, uh, street number or Straits Road street number.
Well, see, that's the problem, if it's got a Depot Roads address and the ambulance is out there looking for it. They know there's a house there, but they can't, they don't know how to get there because they came from North Hampton.
So maybe it needs to have a street road.
I mean, state troopers had, you call the state trooper, they don't know where you live.
Right.
You know, because he, he's from the eastern part of the state or came out of the Shelburne Barracks or something like that. Uh, that's part of the problem, of course, maybe with a computer in their car, they have GPS and all that sort of thing. But, uh, you know, in an emergency, it, uh, if it's hard for them to find you or find the person with the emergency, that.
Well, it would seem to, me anyway, just from a practical standpoint, regard, regardless of what we, if we were to decide on this, you would just make it, I mean, from an address standpoint and from an emergency standpoint, it'd be Straits Road.
The frontage is on.
Yeah.
Depot.
But yet, when you were doing the townhouse, it looked like.
Yeah, well, yeah, I recall that now.
If there, I, I guess thinking back to that then, when you were doing it, if I had a choice between six townhouses and two single-family homes, I probably would've voted for the two single-family homes, but.
Well, we didn't have a choice.
Yeah.
The submittal was for a six family. I think I'd still like to see the, the driveway go out onto Depot. I think that Straits Road is, is gonna cause a problem with emergency vehicles. And I don't think you can give a, a house on that fronts on Depot Road a Straits Road address.
So that's it, that's your suggestion?
Well, I don't know, I, that's my suggestion. I don't know if you wanna, if, if the board wants to take it under advisement and, and we talk about it some more or do some more research or, or, or come up with some other ideas, uh.
I guess if I, for me anyway, if there's, if you've got the necessary road frontage on Depot Road, which means you're gonna get two houses probably eventually at some point in time on these two lots, that if there were a way to do it in such a way that you could avoid additional impact to the wetlands and the wetland, uh, uh, systems through that area, then maybe accommodate it with something like this and, and then have like restrictions, basically, you know, a, a restriction in the, in the, uh, approval process as opposed to, um, you know, because again, you could, you could always punch these in here. Uh, I don't know, with the Conservation Commission, can, can they avoid access to a, a lot? They can provide stipulations and conditions, but they probably can't avoid it, right?
I don't think they can, no, because you had, you had the right to, to.
Yeah, Massachusetts.
To get to your land, but.
Yeah, these are by right lots right now because of the two hundred feet of frontage.
But they, they can allow, uh, the, the driveway through the wetlands with stipulations.
Right, right.
Conditions.
Right, but, but the bottom line is, is that until the law is changed in Massachusetts, these are by right lots because there's two hundred feet of frontage along a main artery, right?
Well, their, their approval not required.
Yeah, approval not required, right.
Because they, it's, it's one parcel now.
Right, right.
But because the landowner can cut them off with adequate frontage, inadequate, uh, area, then it's an approval not required.
Right.
It's a, it's a division of land that, that does not require subdivision approval.
So since it's approval not required and you could get two lots there, if, if we were to approve the common driveway concept off of Straits Road, we're not giving Mr. Brusko anything that he wouldn't have been able to get anyway, because he would still be able to get his two lots with approval not required. We're perhaps doing it in a way that actually has less impact on, on the wetlands. If, if we're okay then with the emergency provisions and the address issue. And then you have two more curb cuts off of Depot Road. I mean, I come out of Tulum's, it's the scariest driveway I can, in town.
Yeah.
Steve Tulum's, he's right next to Motika.
Yeah.
Because there's, not only are you in the hill, but you're also in that S-turn and it's.
There's an off-site distance.
Yeah, it's a, that's a scary driveway to come out of.
So what are we gonna do, take some action on it or take it under advisement?
I have to excuse myself.
I know, yeah, that's.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, relative.
We're brother-in-law.
Oh.
So you might have to wait till the other.
You may have.
Maybe that's what we should do, is wait till we get a full board so there's not just two of us approving it.
I went this route the, the last time we tried to do something in this town and it took about five months.
Well, I, I, I hope it doesn't take that long, but.
Because of people recusing themselves and.
Well, you missed.
Not having a quorum.
Well, you, you came in a little late, but we, uh, voted in two new members to replace our two lost members.
So those folks are, as soon as they get sworn in, they'll be online.
They've been approved by the selectmen, so they'll just, just gotta be sworn in, so they'd be here next month.
So we'll take it, we'll take it under advisement until we.
I want me to come back in, uh, January, it sounds like.
Well, there's a, um, yeah, January, January is our next meeting.
I know you just came back, but I'd like to get down there for a little bit, not just have to stay up here.
Well, I'm going, I'm going back the end of the month, the end of December, so, uh.
Are you gonna be here for this January seventh meeting?
Doesn't look like it and we're gonna talk about that as well, so, uh, unless we meet again before Christmas to take care of some of this business between the, uh, the fellow that was here before with the, uh, one, one lot subdivision and, and take care of Steve's parcel. Maybe we should meet again in two weeks so we don't get it drug out too long. You wanna do that?
I love that suggestion.
That would be, what, the seventeenth? I haven't killed it.
Word members, who is it?
Uh, the seventeenth.
Yeah, seventeen.
Wednesday, the seventeenth. I, I mean, I, that's right, I have something else that night, but I could, I could, I don't have to. I, I could make this meeting if we had to do it.
Okay.
Because I know what it's like to get stretched out over the holidays and stuff like that and.
I should've started this, I had this thing for the previous meeting, I didn't think you were back. For some reason, I should've went down and checked the room.
Well, I would.
I guess we don't matter, Paul. Well, but you had to recuse yourself anyway, so you know.
Yeah.
All right, I'll come back on the seventeenth.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You may wanna, um, this is just a suggestion, call Randy Isner and, and ask the same kind of question, where he thought that common driveways were popular in Hatfield.
Well, there is some.
Yeah, there's a few.
There's common drives.
On the mountain, yeah, up.
Major Nick's, uh, place over here on North Street, it's a common drive coming off of North Street, uh, right behind the soccer, uh, goalposts there. There's one there, there's one up in Bob's neck of the woods, uh, up in Straits Road.
Oh, yeah, there is, yeah, the, just up the road from me, there's two houses way in the back that have a common driveway.
Oh, yeah, I know where that is.
How did they get there? They didn't come to the planning board?
No, the building inspector allowed it. Uh, again, two lots, the, both numbers are out there on the road.
But their frontage is on.
Their frontage is on Mountain Road and their driveway is on Mountain Road. So again, if, if an emergency vehicle was looking for them, the numbers are right there. They don't have to go to another road to find it.
Still, just like when they numbered the townhouses, two oh four. Same scenario, if, if, if the, if the driveway was coming off Depot Road or Straits Road, if, if the, if the signs out there, two oh four A and two oh four B, I think it would solve that, that concern, but.
Well, again, we, we don't number, we don't number houses or, we don't number properties, the building inspector does that. And there's a plan all laid out with a number, because the numbers are, um, every hundred feet is a number, so, uh, and because we have two hundred-foot lots, one lot might be one hundred, but the next lot isn't one oh two, it might be one oh six.
Right.
So your next-door neighbor might be, again, your one hundred, your next-door neighbor might be one oh six, it jumps up that many numbers. So it's not, it's not like in the city where everybody is two numbers, whether it's odd or even, everybody is two numbers, uh, higher. For some reason, they numbered Hatfield every hundred feet on all the roads. For some reason, they number at Hatfield every 100 feet on all the roads.
Stella's house is two, ours is six, Mitch's is 10. Go figure that out.
Yeah, see.
But, I would hate to think that, that, that particular issue would, you know, cause, cause a problem to the point where you couldn't utilize a common drive. I, I think that, that's a problem that's easily sol, not easily solvable, but solved.
No, and my concern is the, the emergency vehicle is on the wrong road looking for the, the house, and there's a situation that needs attending to right away. And, you know, it's, it's different, it's one thing in town because everybody kinda knows everything in town, but we're getting, we get ambulances from Northampton and we get state troopers that, that are from the eastern part of the state that don't know...
The GPS on the state crews is showing 204 Straits, Straits Road. I, I think you'd go to that right?
I don't know, I don't even know if they have GPS. Years ago, they didn't. You'd call and they couldn't find where you were. You had to give them directions on how to get, because they were from somewhere else and, and in other barracks, like a Shelburne Barracks or something, so they weren't even familiar with the neighborhood. Okay, well...
17.
Yep.
We'll try again.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess that's something we have to work on in the future as well, common driveways, because it, it may creep up again, especially on the mountain, or some of the lots, I mean, I question, is there even usable frontage on that lot because of the wetlands out there? And there were, there were other lots I know around town that have wetlands in the front, the back is high and dry, but they can't get there without crossing the wetlands.
But if they, but am I right, though, under our current statutes in the state, if they have 200 feet of frontage, they would get, it would be an A and R, right? Approval not required? And then they'd have to, the Conservation Commission would have to provide some stipulations?
Satisfy the Conservation Commission, yeah.
So, I guess for me, I'd hope that we could figure out some way to maybe address the issue you're raising, and if we can avoid two driveways punching through wetlands, that we, we figure out a way to do that, because it would seem like that would be a, at least from the wetland's perspective, would be a better scenario.
And that's where Ron, Ron Sase would be helpful.
Yeah, would be helpful, yep.
Having him on the board as well.
Because I'll tell you, some of those private drives up on the mountain, you know, Bob, as well as I do, they're not 20 feet wide.
No, no.
The one I'm thinking of right now, it's not even Poshex, it's that one that's up near me. I mean, if that thing's 15 feet wide, it's wide, and it's got two houses off of it. I'm assuming that they have 400 feet of road frontage out on Lindsay Road, but I don't know, but, I don't know when those houses went in, but they're...
I don't either.
But it's really nar, it's a really narrow driveway.
So, the one on Lindsay Road where Poshex is?
Oh, yeah.
There's, how many houses there? Two or three?
Two, there's two.
I'm not familiar with it, so I don't know.
So, there would be like, say, this is the driveway, so 200 feet, they still have...
They have 200.
They use that driveway, but they still 200 feet of it.
Right.
Right, they each have 200, they just share a driveway.
Right.
Because this guy in this lot can't get out for whatever, for terrain or something like that, so he comes through with the other, the neighbors.
Yeah, in fact, that house on Poshex, the house, the second house just got built. It just was finished, in fact, they just, he, he paid to clean up the driveway. And, but, but, you know, Donny's house is way, way up in the back and then this house is down lower, but it's on the left and Donny's is on the right, so Donny gets the 200 feet on this side. And, and then there's at least one other that I'm aware of on Lindsay Road that's up a little further, and that one's got a really narrow driveway. I would suspect there's a couple up at, on Old Stage. Well, the gentleman who is here looking to do the subdivision, he's doing, he's got sort of a common driveway there now, right? He maintains that driveway for the two other houses off of Old Stage Road.
Oh, yeah.
Mazik.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's just a gravel drive, so...
Yeah.
Well, our next item on the agenda is PVPC Hatfield Steering Committee, Dash Valley Vision Regional Land Use Plan, Priority Protection Areas, Priority Development Areas for the region. I, I don't know that we have anything more to add to this.
And you went to the meeting, right? This is the one that you went to?
Yeah, but he, you know, he just talked in generalities of those, that sheet of paper was the talking.
But I think the information had to be given to Paul by the 28th.
Probably.
The selectman had no comment.
Yeah, I, you know, nothing's changed in town. I mean, they're asking for, for this, for instance, for transit-oriented development. Well, we don't have any train stations, we don't have any bus stations, we don't have any intermodal transportation centers, and, and we've already identified the priority development sites and that sort of thing. So, I, I don't think we have anything more to add. This was just developed, I don't know if there's a date on here.
November 2014.
Okay, I think that's when they, you know, when they printed it, but we, we did this, I think, just a couple of years ago, we, we identified those sites and...
And nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed in Hatfield to, you know, we haven't used them up and therefore we need to identify some more sites for, that are prime for development, so I think we'll just let that go. Commercial parking, by all, we talked about that. Green development, Chris Curtis contacted us and wants to know if we're interested in pursuing the green development. I think we should just let him know that we're just gonna let that, leave that on the, back on the bookshelf again. It didn't receive a good of reception when we had a, had the, the public hearing on it, so I think we'll just let that go for now, so. We've got minutes, I don't know if everybody read their minutes from last time, November 5.
The one thing I noticed in the November 5th one, and actually Jeff brought it up, was we did discuss briefly at that meeting the idea of our appointment to the CPC meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And, and that's somewhat contingent upon the AG committee appointing a new person, and that committee just hasn't had a chance to meet yet to make that appointment, but the idea was that they would appoint a new representative and that, we had talked about me then being the representative from here.
You would become the representative from the planning board, okay, that makes sense. Do we wanna wait until that happens, or...
Yeah, I mean, that, we can, I mean, if you wanna let Jeff know that we're, you know, that's...
I left it out because we had to post it.
Right, oh, and have, oh, so...
Yeah, and those were votes, but we could certainly put those votes in these minutes tonight and be ready to go if we want.
Well, but you would still need to post it, right? That we were gonna have that conversation?
Yeah, sure, that was part of the posting, yeah, it would need to be posted.
Well, let's take it up next time.
Well, we couldn't do it on the 17th because the other committee, unless, I mean, we could do it, the AG committee won't meet between now and then, they'll probably meet maybe the first early January, but...
So, would that be a problem if we appointed you?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
So, we'll do that on the 17th then.
Okay.
Point Bob is the planning board's representative.
Do we want to invite the selectmen for that night?
No, I think we just let them know that, who the appointee is. That's all, I think that's all they need to know, that the position is filled. So, I will, I'll call Steve Luzey tomorrow and tell him we need that additional landscaping plan in order to approve both amendments to the, to the site plan.
He's just gonna add the, add the shrubbery or the...
Yeah, the landscaping area. I think if he just has them indicate on the plan, the extent of the additional landscaping.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we get that on there, only because if it's not on there, it's convenient, then we forget to do it.
Right.
And they sort of conveniently forgot to put it in the sidewalks.
It's not on here.
So, I have a question about that, just in the future. Is that the building inspector's responsibility? Whose responsibility is to make sure that a plan gets actually built out as it was approved?
Yes, yeah, because he's the only enforcement, so he gets a copy of the approved plan and, and when he's, I would assume, when he's doing the certificate of occupancy, that he reviews the site plan to be sure that, that it was done according to the plan that was approved.
At some point, like, this is a big project for us, he has to, to sign, I know he's obviously signing off on the, on the, on the actual buildings, but all the, you know, the things that they were supposed to do, the drainage ditch or the, he, he's responsible for all that.
I would say, yeah, because it's...
So, at some point, there's gotta be like a final inspection and now it's turned over to the homeowners association.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you're far more knowledgeable and familiar than, on this stuff than me, but I would've thought when that project was being done, that the sidewalks would've been put in as part of the site prep, maybe not initially, but at some point, while the houses were being built, you'd put the sidewalk in as opposed to tearing up all of those lawns and everything to put in the sidewalk.
Well, no, because the sidewalk would get torn up from the construction.
Okay.
And much the way you paved the road, but you only put the base material down.
Okay.
So, when all the construction activity is, is marring up the road...
Yeah, right, it's just marring up.
It's the base, and then when, the last thing you do, when, when everything's all done and you've swept your way out, they go in and put the top on and it, it, it doesn't get all messed up from, from the construction activity.
So, the same would've been true for the, so there's no way of getting around the fact that you'd be, be disrupting a lot of, I mean, there'd be, because you obviously had lawn there and everything, you'd have to tear all that up to put in the sidewalk.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Because it, it would get, it would've gotten broken up and torn up from the construction activity, and you don't do it just in one front of one house, you do the whole, whole section, so, that's, again, so it's, it's new when, when the project is done, it's completed. As a matter of fact, some of the homeowners called me a few years ago, maybe it was last year, saying, "How can we be sure that they're gonna pave the road?" Well, it's not the planning board's responsibility, it would be the homeowner's responsibility to be sure that the developer finishes what he said he was gonna do.
And wouldn't that also then, if they had some town recourse, would be to the building inspector, right? Because as Paul was saying, you wouldn't get really a final sign-off until you...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, minutes of September, I'm sorry, November 5.
No.
Yeah, November. November 5.
November 5, right?
Yeah, everybody read them?
Yep.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we approve them as submitted?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other business?
We don't have to do the minutes of September 10th, right? That was, you had given us, so maybe I just had that from an earlier...
No, that was just for your...
That was regarding...
All right, yeah.
The Hatfield Village.
Another item that you wanted to talk about.
Oh, yes, thanks for reminding me. I'm, I'm headed south again, the end of the month, the 30th of December, and I'll probably be back the end of March, so I'd like, I'd like Paul to, to be the chairman in my absence. When I was gone this past fall, I was pretty much incommunicado because I was on the road, but I'll have a fixed base...
Yeah, I know.
Down there, and telephone and internet and all that sort of thing.
I'm canceling all, first order of business to cancel all meetings.
You're the, you're the acting chairman, or whatever we're gonna call you, that, then you can do that. That's why, again, we'll meet again in two weeks so we can take care of some of this business and get that out of the way.
Okay.
Okay. So, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at five minutes till nine.